Good evening, welcome to our Monday, November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five Bemidji School District Board Meeting. And if you would like to join me, please do so in reciting the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, first item here, we're gonna have the approval of the agenda, which, before I call for a motion, we're gonna include in the motion to take off the point, talking about the purchase of the Central Elementary School, so that'll be off of the agenda. May I have someone offer a motion to accept the agenda, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, may I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, thank you. Okay, we have no public participation tonight. Are there any requests to remove topics from the consent agenda? Okay, may I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as proposed in our agenda tonight?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, may I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries unanimously. Okay, that brings us to our special topics, and tonight we are, have a spotlight presentation on robotics. So, take it away robotics. Oh, it's humans, not robots, no. They have some robots, I know.
Good evening, board members, we are the Bemidji High School RoboJacks, Team Forty-Six Seventy-Four. I'm Megan, and I'm joined by Connor and Ren. Today, we will share how our team not only builds robots, but builds skilled and prepared leaders. Our mission statement is clear, it is to build students who are geared for success through STEAM. We do this through our core values of hard work, initiative, teamwork, enthusiasm, innovation, and impact. During our six-week build season, we implement these values into our everyday work. When someone steps up to start a new project, that's initiative. When a programmer works with the builders to troubleshoot a new sensor, that's teamwork. Our entire team's operation is built on students recognizing a problem and taking complete ownership of the solution. This mentality contributed to us getting the Rising All-Star Award at the Great Northern Regional last year. This award is dedicated to teams that have overcome challenges despite being young.
During the build season, our students gain hands-on proficiency and advanced skills like CAD, where we design our whole robot in a three-D model, so we can look at it when we're trying to make new with new elements to add to the robot. Our students learn to machine parts and program our CNC mill to make our more intricate parts. Our control system sub-team spends many hours coding and wiring our robot, so that, to make sure each element of a robot works perfectly with each other. This past year, our team's dedication to working on these skills got us to the playoffs at both regionals, and third place, all-conference at the NMRC art competition. Now, we'd like to show you what all that hard work makes.
First is often called a varsity sport for the mind, and this holds true with the leadership skills we develop through our program. Our values help us maintain gracious professionalism, which means competing to win while treating everyone, students and mentors alike, with respect. Every student on Team Forty-Six Seventy-Four has a role, from managing social media to building the robot. And through these roles, they learn accountability, project management, and conflict resolution. We aren't just building future engineers, we're building leaders who are, who can communicate and act ethically in any professional environment. This commitment to leadership and respect is what we focus on teaching our younger members. Working alongside us in our shop is the WhistlePunks. This is a first LEGO League team who built their first FRC robot for this last year's game.
Hello, we are Team One-One-Two-Two-Three, the WhistlePunks, a volunteer-led FRC team funded by Bemidji First LEGO League Robotics. Our team is made up of seventh and eighth graders who all share a passion for robotics. Some of you may remember us from four years ago, when we presented as the Squirrelbusters, a young, smiley team of fourth and fifth graders, first LEGO League kids on their way to Boston after winning state. I'm Wyatt. This season, half of our team is aging out of LEGO League and moving on to high school-level robotics. We wanted to get a head start on learning and competing at FRC, so we could keep growing our skills. With encouragement from Mr. Whittington, we decided to make the jump to FRC.
This is when we looked into FRC more through Kirk Anderson and his mentors with the RoboJacks. We've collaborated with the RoboJacks a few times before at parades and other events like Barbican Bots. We've always admired their work and wanted to try our hand at FRC, so with some grants, we started our adventure this summer.
We created our team with the goal of learning new skills that will help us in the future. We called our team the WhistlePunks. A whistlepunk is a young lumberjack who operates a seam whistle to signal and communicate with other lumberjacks in the woods. We thought this name suited our team well, because we were working so closely with the RoboJacks. It fit perfectly. We built a kit bot with the help of our mentors, and we were also able to add swerve motors to our bot for easier and smoother driving. Then we tested the bot and made iterations, like adding a panel for outtake and intake to score more accurately on the field. Our outtake and intake panels are used to fill space between coral stations and coral reefs, kinda like an extended ramp on both ends of our robot. This change made for a smoother and more accurate transition of game pieces.
With all these new and improved iterations, we started focusing on what we needed to do to be competition-ready. We figured out our roles, like pit team, scout lead, drivers, and many more. Knowing our strengths through teamwork, we decided who would focus on what role. This helped us to be the most efficient we could be with our little time left to prepare. Everyone worked on their roles to practice, but before we knew it, competition day was almost there. We made sure to have all our roles covered. I was in the scout team.
I was the human player.
I was safety captain.
Everyone had to do their part to make sure we could accomplish our goals and perform the best we possibly could.
In order to be as prepared as possible, we started making checklists to make sure we all had the tools and equipment we needed. We had to get a robot cart for transportation, a battery cart, cords to charge them, and many other tools. We needed storage and extra tools for bumper changes or in case something broke. We made sure to look through every list and to get all the basics. We also created checklists for specific jobs at the competition. As a middle school team against high schools, we wanted to be as prepared as possible.
When it came to competition day, we gathered our team and started setting up. We talked to tons of teams and learned lots of information about how FRC competitions are run. A few of us even got to sit on a RoboJacks presentation. During our second run, our intake panel cracked and ended up snapping halfway through the match. We had to jump right into action to get it repaired before our next match.
We were the first all-middle school team to compete at the NMRC tournament, and our hard work helped us reach to rank number seven out of twenty-four teams at the competition.
And competed in Boston multiple times, and New York City, but more importantly, we've grown together as a team.
Hi, I'm Savannah, this is my second year at FLL. I learned so much last year, grew my coding skills, confidence, teamwork, and public speaking skills. This year, we have four teams. We are currently working on our archaeology innovation project with a local expert and fine-tuning our robot game. We compete on December twelfth at the Sanford Center, and would love to see you there.
When we look beyond the competition field, our mission truly comes to life in our community. Our greatest source of pride is Unified Robotics, a program we created that brings students with and without disabilities together to build LEGO robots. We recognize a significant gap in STEAM supports. Students in special education were being excluded from competitive, high-engagement STEAM opportunities. We partnered with the Unified Program and established the first Unified Robotics Program in the state of Minnesota in twenty-twenty-three. This program's mission is true inclusion. It's about building teamwork, self-confidence, and a sense of shared accomplishment, proving that STEAM learning is for all abilities.
The response has been phenomenal. Our first season started with four teams across two schools. This year, we've seen an a hundred and sixty percent increase, with thirty teams across thirteen schools, with over twenty coming to our competition this Saturday at BHS. We are actively working with regional partners to bring this model beyond Bemidji, with the goal of expanding all throughout Minnesota. Our vision is to make Unified Robotics a standard, year-long program at every Minnesota school that offers a high school robotics program. Last year, we were even awarded the Foster Award, celebrating our efforts to bring Unified Robotics to everyone. The success we've seen here proves that this model works, and we are committed to being the leaders in this statewide expansion.
We have a strong connection inside of our community through Unified Robotics, but also through reaching out to our community. Some of the outreach we do is parades, tech expos, coding camps, presenting at schools.
Volunteering at first LEGO League competitions, demonstrating at the fair, Jump Start.
FRC Roundtable, Fargo Airshow, and more. We do this to show that STEAM is for everyone.
In summary, our program is designed to build leaders through technical excellence and community impact.
Thank you again for your time and your support of the RoboJacks.
We're happy to answer any questions you may have.
I heard you say that you have a lathe, where is that located at?
Our lathe is in our machine shop, we have around, I think, ten of them.
Oh, wow.
So, the competition on Saturday, what time does it start, eh?
It starts at ten-thirty.
Okay, Mike, I have a grandson who's in fourth grade and does the STEAM at Horace May, and, is it Horace May? Jean Dillon, sorry, will be there.
So, it said it was a six-week season? How do you organize the groups, the responsibilities, learn these various skills in that timeframe? Or is it, is there training in the offseason?
So, during our offseason, we go pretty much all year, and for the kids that show up, we train them in how to do different tasks and to grow these skills. And a lot of them, we encourage them to take a bunch of these classes that we have at the high school, like our machining class, our engineering classes, a bunch of different skills that they would use during the build season. And during the build season, we divvy up who wants to do what jobs, and then we start designing and building a robot.
So, it's a six-week competition season, but the rest of the time, you're preparing and learning. It's awesome, you guys should be really proud of yourselves, it was really, really cool.
So, the meet on Saturday starts at ten-thirty, does it go all day?
It goes from ten-thirty till about three, depending on if we get delayed.
At BHS?
Yeah, in the commons.
And then the one later, December twelfth, at the Sanford Center, is another, that's the WhistlePunks?
That's our FLL team.
Well, I'll have to beat that competition as well.
I just wanna thank you guys for presenting, and of course, I'm super proud of all of you and the teams, and I do remember the Squirrelbusters too, that was, made quite an impression, I think that was my first year, so just so many opportunities, thank you. What's really exciting to me as an educator is to look at all these things you're doing that are fun, but then also just seeing those lifelong skills you're building, so, thank you.
Yeah, I got to volunteer at the last, and it was so much fun, and I am so bummed that I have to miss this Saturday, I'm out of town. So, I, when I got the email, I was like, shoot, I was tempted to cancel my plans to come. I'm so proud of all of you guys, this is our future, look at these kids, they're so awesome. I always get so excited when I hear about robotics, I still cannot work those robots, I always try down at our conference, but, way to go, keep up the good work, and thank you to all of the staff, the parents, for all the hard work and dedication you put into this, because it's awesome.
Can I, can you guys hold up your Legos? Please, thank you. That'd be cool. Do you mind?
They don't bite though, right?
I wish they shouldn't bite yet.
No.
You can control.
Okay, thank you very much for that presentation, and best of luck in your competitions coming up here, so, thank you very much. Okay, next on our agenda is student representative reports from two amazing students as well.
Well, it's gonna be hard to follow that presentation. So, in communities all throughout the US, people struggle to have access to food. This month, the public schools in Bemidji have focused on the Stuff a Truck program. Bemidji High School Student Council was given the opportunity to volunteer in the Backpack Buddies program with United Way to give children non-perishable food for the weekends or breaks. Three thousand bags were filled. This month, Jean Dillon Student Council has been focused on creating holiday cards for local residents in our nursing homes and care facilities, as well as collecting items for Stuff a Truck. The recent actions done by the Bemidji Public Schools have shown the impact they've made on their community by helping gather items for Stuff a Truck, volunteering in the Backpack Buddies program, and making holiday cards for residents in local nursing homes and care facilities.
We're focusing on the student reps talking more about policy, so mine's a little bit shorter, but it's more policy geared. I want to introduce the idea of putting smoke detectors for weed and vapes into the bathrooms. It relates to our smoking policy on campus, and we would need to find room in our budget. It would also be easier to maintain and keep up with that versus a couple hall monitors trying to keep track of all of our students. For this project, we would need to look into initial cost, which products we want to use, where we are getting the money, and if there are any grants available.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we don't have any listening session participants tonight, so we'll move on to donations, and Superintendent Olson will explain those to us.
All right, so, we have some fairly large donations here. We have Bemidji Education Foundation donated a total of twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars to forty different projects for our teachers in our district, so I wanna recognize them for that incredible donation. Additionally, Edward Jones donated one thousand dollars to Bemidji High School Girls Basketball. So, again, thank you for all of our generous donors, and again, I want to just recognize Bemidji Education Foundation for all the great work that they do for all of our teachers.
Okay, would someone like to bring forward a motion to accept these donations, please?
I will bring forward a motion.
Thank you, and may I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries unanimously, thank you. Okay, now we move on to our action items, we only have eighteen of them tonight, so, we're gonna move through these fairly quickly, with Superintendent Olson's help, of course. But the first one is the Comprehensive Achievement and Civic Readiness Approval, and Colleen will bring that to us, please.
Good evening, Board Chair, Board Superintendent, and all stakeholders. Tonight, I will be presenting the Comprehensive Achievement and Civil Readiness Report, which has replaced the World's Best Workforce Report. And so, let me just change the slide, here we go. The goals on this report have changed slightly. Most of them are the same, the first one, all students are ready for school. All racial and economic achievement gaps between students are close. All students are ready for college and career. All students graduate from high school are basically the same, but the newest one that they added to the report are all students are prepared to be lifelong learners. In the first area, our preschool does the goal that identifies that all students are ready for school, and really, what they look at is that they have seventy percent of the students in their five-day-a-week. Our two have the ability to demonstrate ten letters out of twenty, and as you can see, the goal is at seventy percent, and they reached eighty-five point nine in the area of reading. In the area of math, they wanted the students to be identified ten out of twenty numbers, and the goal was at seventy percent, and our students in the pre-care area were at eighty-four point eight. The next goal that is set by the state is the racial and economic achievement gap between students. We have identified all our subgroups above. As a district, we did not meet our goals yet, it is a five-year goal, but in special education and free and reduce, I am proud to say that Lincoln has surpassed these goals, and in the area of free, reduce, Northern has also achieved those goals. We still have a long ways to go to close those racial achievement gaps, but we are working on it, and like I said, Lincoln is doing an amazing job with Northern, close behind, closing, meeting those goals and closing those gaps. The next area is the goal of all students are ready for college and career. In the area of college and career ready, Bemidji Area Schools ninth through twelfth-grade students will be exposed to at least two college and career exploration opportunities in each school year. Listed above is the offering in the last school year. This does not include all of the great college or career academic opportunities that we have in our career academies. In ninth grade, we have the CEO in the classrooms, and I'm proud to say that many of the CEOs are businesses in the area, in Bemidji area, that come in and talk to our kids. We have a college and career fair. In tenth grade, we do a tour of medicine, tour of manufacturing. We have student workshop days, and we cover this goal by college and career readiness opportunities within our school day, and they have opportunities to talk about college and career. This is an area that I would say that we're extremely strong in, especially with our career academies, so, we have added additional pieces and components and opportunities for our kids, and we will continue to do so. And the all students graduate from high school, that is the fourth goal. The five-year goal is to reach an eighty-five point three percent graduation rate in year twenty-twenty-eight. Our results went down slightly to seventy-four point eight, but as you can see, our Bemidji High School itself is at eighty point six. I will add that this is affected by students who leave the district without notifying where they are going, and that's especially true in our alternative programs. One of the biggest issues that we have is that as students are identified in ninth grade, and this goal is affected by the number of kids that graduate in twelfth grade, and so if the student leaves without letting us know where they're going to, and we don't have the documentation that goes with that, that graduation rate is affected, the overall score is affected, and that's an area that we have been working on, we worked on it last year, and we need to continue to work on it, because we do have a very transient population, and so it does have an effect, and so I do wanna share that with you. The next goal is a really interesting one, in the fact that all students are prepared to be lifelong learners. We needed to create a baseline for that, and I guess I don't have a mouse. If I had a mouse, I would take you to the district website, in which we looked at the survey
Okay, next we have, pages are sticking together here, first reading of revised policy on student attendance, and Superintendent Olson will bring this to us, please.
All right, we have a whole marathon of policies to approve tonight, but I wanted to, before we start into that, I wanted to explain the policy work that's been happening as a district. So, a few years ago, the school board wanted to make policy development, policy maintenance a priority, and so we embarked on a pretty ambitious timeline to try to work through all of our policies to make sure that they were newer than nineteen seventy-five, for instance. And so, as we went through that work, we are about two meetings away from being able to get through all of the policies and then now move into the maintenance mode. So, right now, we're in that hard road of reviewing every single policy, then we're gonna be moving to maintenance. So, there is something like fourteen policies tonight. I want to make sure that everyone understands from transparency standpoint, I'm gonna be going very quickly through these. If anyone has any specific questions on the policies, most of these have very minor changes, if any. Just so you know, I am available for questions as well. We have a transparent process here up in Bemidji Schools, the first reading of any policy, when there's any changes made, we bring that to an action item here at the school board meeting, and then it's also second reading is at the next board meeting in the form of a consent agenda. So, there is a month between our policies, so if anyone has any questions. So, I just want to explain our process real quickly. So, as we go through this, if the school board has any questions, feel free to stop me, I can certainly explain, but I felt like probably reading through every policy for fourteen is gonna be a little bit much for tonight. So, in the first policy on student attendance, what we are doing is we're updating based on the statute that changed, that is now moved into requiring telehealth to be part of our attendance policy, and so this policy reflects the current language, there's not any real structural changes to our attendance policy other than adding in telehealth and making a few adjustments.
Okay, would somebody like to offer a motion to approve the first reading of this revised policy for student attendance, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, may I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries unanimously. Okay, next we have, pages are sticking together here, first reading of revised policy on student attendance, and Superintendent Olson will bring this to us, please.
All right, we have a whole marathon of policies to approve tonight, but I wanted to, before we start into that, I wanted to explain the policy work that's been happening as a district. So, a few years ago, the school board wanted to make policy development, policy maintenance a priority, and so we embarked on a pretty ambitious timeline to try to work through all of our policies to make sure that they were newer than nineteen seventy-five, for instance. And so, as we went through that work, we are about two meetings away from being able to get through all of the policies and then now move into the maintenance mode. So, right now, we're in that hard road of reviewing every single policy, then we're gonna be moving to maintenance. So, there is something like fourteen policies tonight. I want to make sure that everyone understands from transparency standpoint, I'm gonna be going very quickly through these. If anyone has any specific questions on the policies, most of these have very minor changes, if any. Just so you know, I am available for questions as well. We have a transparent process here up in Bemidji Schools, the first reading of any policy, when there's any changes made, we bring that to an action item here at the school board meeting, and then it's also second reading is at the next board meeting in the form of a consent agenda. So, there is a month between our policies, so if anyone has any questions. So, I just want to explain our process real quickly. So, as we go through this, if the school board has any questions, feel free to stop me, I can certainly explain, but I felt like probably reading through every policy for fourteen is gonna be a little bit much for tonight. So, in the first policy on student attendance, what we are doing is we're updating based on the statute that changed, that is now moved into requiring telehealth to be part of our attendance policy, and so this policy reflects the current language, there's not any real structural changes to our attendance policy other than adding in telehealth and making a few adjustments.
Okay, would somebody like to offer a motion to approve the first reading of this revised policy for student attendance, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, may I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries unanimously. Okay, next we have the first reading of a revised policy, Middle School Extracurricular Program Administrative Procedures.
All right, this is a policy on promotion of middle school students. What it does is it clarifies and streamlines the process. We've worked with our Activities Department on this, just to make sure we're clarifying and streamlining our process. It defines subjective sports versus stopwatch sports and the different requirements there. It gives procedures that must be followed prior to the promotion of a middle school student to high school. That involved a lot of discussion, and so after that discussion, it was brought forward to the Policy Committee for approval here at the school board.
Okay, thank you. Would someone like to offer a motion to approve this first reading of the Middle School Extracurricular Program Administrative Procedures, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, although, excuse me, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, carries unanimously, thank you. Okay. Okay, next is the first reading of revised policy concerning establishment and adoption of school district budget MSBA seven oh one.
All right, this is a minor modifications, including that there were some language that we took from MSBA as well that talks about the use of the fund balance when a shortfall exists, because that is what we are currently doing, so it's actually our policies reflecting our current practice, but we did not have that in policy, so that's a minor change.
Okay, thank you. Would someone like to offer a motion to approve the establishment and adoption of school district budget MSBA seven oh one, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, carries unanimously, thank you. Okay, next is the first reading of revised policy concerning establishment and adoption of school district budget MSBA seven oh one, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, carries unanimously, thank you. Okay, next is the first reading of policy on accounting, MSBA seven zero two.
So, this policy gives guidance on best practices for accounting, so it really just regulates the way our business department operates and accounts and prepares for audits.
Thank you. Would someone like to offer a motion to approve this revision of this policy in accounting, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, may I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, carries unanimously, thank you. Okay, next is the first reading of modification of school district budget as per MSBA seven oh one point one.
All right, this has been a newly added policy that outlines how modifications of the budget happen, so it puts out the different procedures, the different steps, when there is a modification to the school district budget, and how that's presented to the board, how the board goes through and approves that.
Okay, thank you. Would someone like to offer a motion to approve the first reading of the modification of school district budget as per MSBA seven zero one point one, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, may I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, thank you. Okay, next we have the first reading of revised policy regarding investments, MSBA seven zero five.
All right, so this policy governs district investments, it outlines statutory language, so there's some specific statutes around how fund balances, how investments can be invested by the school district. It gives objectives and priorities on invested funds. The rank order is safety, security, liquidity, and rate of return. Those are the things that the board must consider when doing district investments. All those things are spelled out in statute. It also outlines who can invest the district funds, and it creates a standard of conduct and internal controls to ensure accountability for all funds.
Okay, thank you. Would someone please offer a motion to approve this first reading for investments as per MSBA seven zero five, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, may I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, thank you. Next, we have the first reading of revised policy pertaining to fund balance, MSBA seven one four.
All right, so this policy governs our fund balance, our minimum fund balance as a school district is at ten percent, but it also creates procedures that if the fund balance starts dropping below twelve percent, some means and mechanisms that the school board can use to slow the erosion of the fund balance. They're not necessarily actions that you have to take as a school board, but it's just suggested options if the fund balance starts dropping below twelve percent to try to minimize the impact and try to prevent dropping below that ten percent.
Okay, thank you. Would someone like to offer a motion to approve this first reading of fund balance as per MSBA seven one four, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, may I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, carries unanimously, thank you. Okay. Next, we have the first reading of revised policy for keys and building usage, please.
All right, so what we've done here is we put in addition to the policy that spells out that employees may be charged a fee for replacement of lost, damaged, or stolen keys, and the reason for that is because it's very expensive to rekey a school, and so there are specific costs that are incurred, so that was added to the policy.
Okay, thank you. Would someone like to bring forth or offer a motion to approve the first reading of this revised policy pertaining to keys and building usage, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, may I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, carries unanimously. Okay, next is the first reading of revised policy pertaining to leaving money and other valuable items in desks and classrooms.
All right, this is incredibly minor, but our old policy had that any money or valuables left in desks or classrooms gets turned into the district office. That's not our current practice, so we are just removing that language, so removing the district office to comply with our current practice.
Okay, thank you. Would someone like to offer a motion to approve this first reading of this revised policy, leaving money and other valuables in district desks and classrooms, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, may I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, thank you. Okay. Next, we have the first reading of revised policy pertaining to development and maintenance of an inventory of fixed assets and a fixed asset accounting system.
This was a handout that was given to you because in the original board book, there was another policy in place, so this is a handout that you received. This really just is as it sounds, it's really creating a maintenance of inventory, making sure that we have our fixed assets accounted for and so forth. This did go through Policy Committee, they are recommending approval.
Okay, thank you. Would someone like to offer a motion to approve the first reading of this policy, development and maintenance of an inventory of fixed asset and fixed asset accounting system, please?
I will make that motion.
Okay, thank you, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, any discussion? Maybe on the length of the name, but anyway. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, thank you, carries unanimously. Okay, next we have the first reading of revised policy pertaining to facility and equipment use.
All right, so this is the policy that governs when organizations rent our buildings and so forth, and just minor updates on minimum coverage for organizations renting district property and other minor updates on the fee schedule, those are all indicated in the packet, so just updating those pieces, making sure that people have enough insurance coverage and so forth. Those are all things that have to be reviewed on an annual basis.
Okay, thank you. Would someone like to offer a motion to approve the first reading of revised policy pertaining to facility and equipment use, please?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, may I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, carries unanimously, thank you. Okay. You're counting? All right. Okay, next is the first reading of policy pertaining to the disposition of obsolete equipment and material, please.
All right, so this policy governs how we dispose of obsolete equipment. There's specific statutes that we need to follow, and so this policy is referencing those statutes, making sure those dollar amounts are consistent with statute because the statutes do change, and we want to make sure we're consistent. Also, we want to make sure that any time we're disposing of equipment or property, that we're doing so in a legal and fair manner, so it spells that out as well to make sure that no one's getting an unfair advantage, and then also the dollars maintain the statutory language.
Okay, thank you. Someone like to offer a motion to approve the first reading of policy pertaining to disposition of obsolete equipment and material, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, may I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries unanimously. What a surprise. Okay, next we have the first reading of revised policy pertaining to staff photo identification.
This is a very minor change. In the original policy, we had for some reason that all IDs will be equipped with a clip fastener, and to be consistent, that doesn't always happen, so we're removing that language.
Okay. Would someone like to offer a motion to approve the first reading of this policy pertaining to staff photo identification, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, may I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you, any discussion?
I don't know, maybe we better put something in there, no, I'm kidding, no discussion.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries unanimously. Okay, next we have, by the way, I used all my sticky notes today, getting this ready, just so you know. All right, first reading of revised policy pertaining to video recording other than on buses.
All right, this is a very minor change, it's a change in wording, but it's a lot of change in meaning. So, the minor change is we used to have in our policy that we use the term video surveillance. Video surveillance insinuates that someone is sitting there watching the video, and so we don't pay any employees to sit there and watch video all day long. So, we have changed that to video recording to indicate and fall in line with our current practices that we look at things after the fact, we don't have people sitting and watching monitors.
Okay, thank you. Would someone like to offer a motion to approve the first reading of revised policy pertaining to video recording other than on buses, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, may I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. That carries unanimously. And the last one is R, and it begins with R, rescinding policies. So, we're going to rescind some policies.
Yeah, so, as we've been doing our policy work, and as we've been updating policies, we are also now identifying a whole host of policies that are either A, they're a duplicate of a policy we already have in another section, or B, they're sort of date that they're not even pertinent to you longer. So, there's a list of policies. We were able to do this all in one, according to our policy on policy. We have a whole list of policies that we'd like to rescind.
All right. Would someone like to offer a motion to rescind the above-named policies, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. That carries unanimously. They all carried unanimously. Wow. That's amazing. Okay, that's our marathon. Wasn't 26 miles, but it was 18 actions.
It just felt like 26 miles.
Okay. Hey, everybody's still awake out there, so it's good. All right, on to upcoming events, please, Superintendent Olson.
All right, so we have a lot of things going on around the district. Tuesday, November 18th, we have the orchestra concert at Bemidji High School. Wednesday, November 26th, we have an early release day district-wide, November 27th and 28th, no school. Thursday, December 4th, Bemidji Middle School Orchestra Concert. On Friday, December 5th, we have the Bemidji Middle School Winter Bash. We have, December 6th, we have Winter Formal at Bemidji High School. And then, Monday, December 8th, we have Native American Family Night at Lincoln Elementary. On Tuesday, December 9th, Bemidji Middle School Band Concert at Bemidji High School. On Thursday, December 11th, Winter Concert at Lincoln Elementary, Bemidji High School Conferences at Bemidji High School, and on December 12th, an early release day, again, district-wide.
Okay, thank you. Oh, upcoming school board.
Yep, and so, we have a listening session on December 15th. Please note the time change. That's at 5:30, and that's because we also have at 6 o'clock, the Truth in Taxation Hearing. So, December's meetings are always structured a little bit different, because we have a Truth in Taxation Hearing at 6 o'clock, and then the next school board meeting, regular school board meeting, is December 15th at 6:30, following the Truth in Taxation Hearing.
Okay, and that brings us to the superintendent's report, and you have one this.
I do, yes. Lots of great things happening around Bemidji Schools that I wanted to emphasize. First of all, as you saw today, we have some outstanding students, whether it's academic or athletic success. We have lots of opportunities, lots of successes happening throughout our district. Couple of things I wanted to report to the school board on is Bemidji Middle School performance, the students' performance placed Bemidji Middle School as U.S. News and World Reports Best Middle Schools. This is for the second year in a row, so congratulations, Bemidji Middle School. Another thing that we always look at, it was taken off the World's Best Workforce here this last round, but the third grade reading scores, you know, we always look at third grade because it's a really important bridge between students learning to read and then learning, reading to learn. And our third grade reading scores, we're at a five-year-high on reading scores, and for the last three years, they've been consistently increasing as a district. That's in an environment where our state's going the other direction. We're actually, we've moved from being below the state average to above the state average in third grade reading. So, congratulations to our key threes. Our elementaries are doing an outstanding job, and I really do appreciate all the work that's being done. We also have Boys Cross Country Team was the eight 3A section champions, which earned them a trip to state, and then Bemidji Swimming and Diving, we had some school records set in the 50 Free, and they were also the Section 8 2A Champions and advanced to state. So, lots of great things happening there in lumberjack country. I'd also like to reference real briefly Veterans Day. So, we have, we had a Veterans Day program at many of our schools, and we wanted to throw up a couple of pictures. This is just two of our many schools that celebrate Veterans Day. We had a lot of great community involvement with our schools, and was a way for us to honor, as a school district, our veterans and all those people currently serving our country. So, really fun opportunities on Veterans Day. In another matter too, United Way, so our Bemidji High School Student Council had an opportunity to volunteer at the United Ways Backpack Buddies recently. That was something that they're doing to give back to our community, and I'm just really proud whenever I get to see our students making a difference in the community. That is something that we certainly always encourage. They helped package over 2,600 food packs, and these packs go home with students in our community every weekend, so it was an important activity, and I just want to, I guess, a little shout-out to our lumberjack leaders, so thank you for all the work you do. Go Jacks.
Okay, that brings us to our adjournment. Would someone like to offer a motion to adjourn, please?
Chair Wall, if I may?
Oh, you may.
Just a word about, this is the last meeting for our HR Director, Jordan Hickman, who has served the district incredibly well over his time as our HR Director. I want to say thank you, Jordan. HR is an extremely challenging job to do. You've done a wonderful job, and you've served our district well. Thank you for your hard work, Jordan, and we'll miss you.
Would someone like to offer a motion to adjourn, please?
I will make that motion.
Thank you, and may I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? No discussion.